This time, I would like to call the Monday, January 6, 2025 Board of Commissioners Meeting to Order. At 4:30, we had a work session with Senator Bobby Hannig and our lobbyist, Warden Smith, to discuss their local legislative agenda, which we will be putting together and send into Raleigh. And at this time, I'll call us to order with invocation and pledge of allegiance. You going to do the invocation? And Commissioner Jarvis will lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, thank you so much for this opportunity to come together in this new year that offers so much hope and optimism. We ask that you spread your hope and your love and your optimism in this county. We ask that you move us forward and that we prosper this year. We also ask you for guidance tonight in the decisions that we make. And finally, we ask for safe travels for all of our friends and citizens that are here attending this meeting. May they be returned safely home. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item is Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest Reminder. Madam Attorney, would you share that with us?
Sure. Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the Board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Hearing none. Next item is Approval of Agenda. I'm going to ask that we move, and we'll explain this, the Commissioners' Report, County Manager's Report, and County Attorney's Report to after the Consent Agenda. And I also am going to ask that we amend the agenda and remove the balloon ordinance from the Consent Agenda for tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, at this time, we'll open up public comment. I have one person signed up, Greta Nelson. I ask you to please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Greta Nelson. My address is 568 South Moles Road, Moayak.
All right, proceed.
Okay. Good evening. It's both an honor and a privilege to stand before you today as we welcome our newly elected representatives into this important body. As a member of a farming family, I come to this conversation with deep-rooted commitment to preserving our agriculture heritage. I firmly believe that we must prioritize the support of local farmers and celebrate the beautiful farmland that remains in our county. Each parcel of farmland is not just a plot for development, it represents a way of life, a source of substance, and a vital component to our community's character. It's essential that we strike a balance between growth and preservation, ensuring that our agriculture legacy is honored and that we maintain the natural beauty that defines our county for generations to come. Our county is experiencing rapid growth, and with this growth comes our responsibility to manage our resources and land wisely. This brings me to a vital point, the necessity of considering the mandatory lot size increases. Years ago, Currituck County standard size for a lot was three acres. Revisiting this guideline could serve to maintain the character of our communities, protect our natural resources, and prevent overcrowding, ensuring that our residents enjoy the quality of life that they deserve. Recently, we faced a pivotal moment in our county, a controversial vote regarding rezoning for apartments. This decision has heightened the importance of balanced growth and development that benefits all. While I know that I'm the minority with my opinion on our farmland and growth and development is inevitable, it's crucial to emphasize the importance of fostering thriving businesses rather than just residential housing. A vibrant local economy relies on diverse opportunities for employment and access to essential services. By supporting initiatives that encourage business growth, we can enhance our community's economic resilience, provide our residents with choice and convenience, and create a more robust local marketplace that benefits all. Additionally, I want to address the pressing issue of tax inflation. Between 2014 and 2024, we've seen marketed increases in taxes. From 2014 to 2024, my county property tax bill for the same piece of property increased $2,516. That's over a 400% increase in 10 years. It's not sustainable. As representatives, it's crucial for you to be cognizant of the impact that these tax hikes have on our residents, especially those on fixed income, single-income families, and those trying to make a living on a rapidly evolving economy. Balancing necessary funds for essential services for our financial strain on our citizens will require careful thought and consideration. I urge you to keep in mind that your vote represents much more than a personal opinion. You're entrusted with the responsibility of amplifying the voices of those who elected you. It's imperative that you engage with your constituents, genuinely listening to their concerns. Your role is to be their advocate, reflecting their needs and desires of the decisions you make. Together, we can ensure that our county continues to thrive as a place where families can build their futures, grow their businesses, and properly educate their children. I know I'm out of time. Thank you for your commitment to our community, your service as leaders, and your willingness to make difficult decisions moving forward. So my top three things were prioritizing slowing growth by considering increase in lot size requirements, hold on tax increases, and focusing on growing business rather than just houses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nelson was the only one I have signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to speak that did not sign up? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move to our public comment, and we're going to move to our public hearings. First public hearing we have tonight is PB 24-01, Currituck County Text Amendment Shopping Centers Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Use Standards, Chapter 5, Development Standards, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurements to Modify the Shopping Center Permitting Requirements, Design Standards, Acclibility, and Shopping Center Definition. Ms. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This might be a record for the earliest I've been before this board ever, so, thank you. So this is a, I mean, it's 6:10. So this is a staff-initiated text amendment regarding shopping centers. Staffs worked on this shopping center for a while to try to come up with a definition of shopping center that better defines what is intended as a shopping center and how the design standards are supposed to be applied to a shopping center. Basically, a shopping center is a larger commercial development with several tenants on a larger piece of property. So, and this is also in your agenda packet on page four, but we'll just start with the current definition of shopping center, which is one or more commercial buildings with 5,000 or more square feet of area, divided into four or more individual tenant spaces that are planned, constructed, and managed as a single entity with common parking, access, loading, stormwater, landscaping, and open space facilities. You can see, it's a pretty low threshold with respect to the square footage, 5,000 square feet. And then our proposed definition is a commercial development with 15,000 square feet of floor area or more, divided into three or more individual tenant spaces, located on a lot that is four acres in area or greater, and planned, constructed, and managed as a single entity with common parking, access, loading, stormwater, landscaping, open space facilities. What we were seeing was lots of applications for what's really similar to strip shopping centers or just larger commercial buildings with several units inside. And basically, what some of the applicants were doing was just cutting a unit down so they wouldn't meet the definition of shopping center, even though it was around 5,000 square feet, 6,000 square feet, something like that. And it's something that staff has felt like needed to be addressed for a while. Actually, prior to the current ordinance language, there was a more similar definition of shopping center to what's proposed before you tonight with the four-acre minimum, so it's on a larger piece of property. The shopping center design standards are more intended to be geared towards having larger, maybe even an anchor store, and having pedestrian circulation and things like that on the site. So that's why this is before you. We also looked at the permitting requirements for shopping centers. Currently, any shopping center needs a special use permit regardless of where it's located with respect to the land use plan. We're suggesting that we bump that up and say that shopping centers that are less than 30,000 square feet may be approved through a zoning compliance permit, which ultimately would be a major site plan review by our technical review committee, and that shopping centers that are 30,000 square feet or greater would continue to require that special use permit. That's consistent with the ordinance language even that requires traffic impact analysis for shopping centers that are 30,000 square feet or larger. So that's the change here. You can see adding the zoning permit here in the use table as well as the description that I just gave you. And then we just want to make it clear here in the shopping center design standards, this is basically just cleanup based on the new definition, that these standards apply to any shopping center development. I will just make a note that commercial development that's greater than 5,000 square feet and outside of your G2, G3, and G4 transect, which is where you kind of want to see more of the development take place, still would require a special use permit, whether it was a large retail or a shopping center development. But these are in those areas that are targeted for more intense growth and development. Just to kind of highlight the changes between the current ordinance and the proposed ordinance, you can see we're bumping up the square footage from five to 15,000 square feet or more, three units or more, and then a parcel of four acres or more currently requires a special use permit. We're proposing the zoning permit for shopping centers up to 30,000 square feet and continuing the special use permit for 30,000 square feet or more. And shopping center design standards currently apply to the smaller projects like the strip centers. And obviously, with the new change, the shopping center design standards would apply to the larger shopping centers. These are the text amendment review standards that you will see many times and have seen many times that you may consider when making your decision whether to approve or deny the text amendment. The planning board and the planning staff do recommend approval of the request because the text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the land use plan as well as, or including, Land Use Goal 3. And I do not have that here for you on the PowerPoint, but I would like to read Land Use Goal 3, which is in your agenda packet, which is to support new and existing commercial developments that adhere to quality, community appearance, and design standards, including landscaping improvements, and signs tailored to achieve a unique community character. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has at this time.
All right, any questions for Ms. Turner?
The current amendment, or the current definition of a shopping center had no requirement for lot size?
Correct.
But the new one does, four acres or more.
Right.
So if someone comes before you with a plan on three acres, then they wouldn't have to follow this.
That's correct. That would just be, it would be still a nonresidential development, subject to nonresidential design standards, but not shopping center standards, not a special use permit.
Anything else?
No.
Anyone else?
Let's take a large commercial building, the four acres. How does the parking apply? Will we have enough space? Because if you look at 15,000 square feet minimum, by the time you put the apron around it, you've eaten up an acre or more. So that leaves you three acres. Will we be able to have enough parking?
Yeah, I mean, the parking will be designed, yes. You will have enough parking. Depending on the square footage, I mean, it's retail, which I believe is one per 300 square feet of parking.
So it's possible if their building was over a certain size, they'd have to have more acres than the four acres, correct?
It's possible, yeah, I mean, sure.
To meet the parking standard.
Of course, I mean, shopping centers may.
That would drive it to go over the amount of acres.
Or you could have one section of it for compact cars or small cars with eight-foot-wide lanes, and then regular lanes for regular size.
With an ordinance amendment.
That's just something they present, if it fit, I guess.
Well, I would hope if a circumstance like that came forward, that staff would inform the commissioners that we need to amend the text.
They lost dollars, Terry.
Yeah, I remember that we lost a business over parking standards years ago, and the commissioners were never told that they didn't meet the parking standards, and we could have amended it and fixed it, so we.
And space.
Yeah.
I mean, that's certainly something that we would always communicate with a prospective developer on what options are, and also communicate with our staff here about any issues that we see with the ordinance.
Yeah, I'd like for communication to us if it needs a change or a looking at so that we know what the issue is as well. So that sounds good.
And this was just something that we felt like needed to be addressed as staff, so that's why you're seeing this.
I agree.
Before you this evening.
And you see this as encouraging commercial development, not hampering it?
Certainly, yes, yes. I mean, we've had several projects, for instance, the Moayak Dental Building that's currently being built, with their first design really met the definition of a shopping center. This particular amendment will allow them to add a unit there without having to get a special use permit.
A dental office meant that it was going to be considered a shopping center?
Well, there were multiple, there were multiple commercial units in the building, so it wasn't just a dental office.
But, so by dropping it from, because in the original definition, it had four, correct?
Yeah.
And we dropped it to three?
And we increased the square footage.
So if it was under 1,500 square foot, but they had four, five, it wouldn't meet the definition. So it's got to meet every single definition in the new definition.
All the components of the new definition.
Gotcha.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Turner. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. We have no one signed up for this text amendment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak that did not sign up? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 2404, Currituck County Text Amendment Shopping Centers because the request is in conformance with the Unified Development Ordinance and imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan Use Goal 3, which states, "Support new and existing commercial developments that adhere to the quality, community, appearance, and design standards, including landscaping improvements, and signs tailored to achieve a unique community character." And I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Turner, is it you again? So we're going to do PB 24-22, Currituck County Text Amendment Evidentiary Hearings, Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2.3.3, dash Community Meeting, and Section 2.3.8, dash Public Hearing Procedures, to clarify the public participation procedures for evidentiary hearings. Ms. Turner.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the evidentiary hearings are those hearings that are required for issuance of special use permits, and you know, because at your prior meeting, you did just that, have an evidentiary hearing for a special use permit. And the prior board had, and our staff also, had kind of identified some areas of the ordinance that might need some clarification with respect to evidentiary hearings, differentiating those hearings from legislative hearings, and just providing a little bit more clarity in the ordinance and for the public as to how the public may participate in those hearings. So, and when this particular language was taken to the planning board, the planning board was concerned about getting the information out to adjacent property owners as early in the process as possible. And through going through a couple of planning board meetings, they thought a good idea was to include a reference to these procedures in the very initial letter. So any project that's subject to a special use permit requires a community meeting, and in the community meeting notice, the applicant has to send out that notice and meet specific notice requirements, and you can see that here on my screen. So in speaking with the planning board, we felt like having that particular very first notice include a reference to the evidentiary hearing procedures would be beneficial. I will also say that staff did put together a, the county attorney actually put together a citizens guide for evidentiary hearings, which we will update based off of, if this text amendment's approved, go ahead and get some, there's some language here that's not in here yet, but we will add that, and then, of course, we will update the commissioners on the back of the brochure as well. But our staff did take this down to a community meeting that was recently had, that was going to be subject to a special use permit, and had these brochures available, so that's another thing that staff's going to do, to try to educate the public on how that you can effectively participate in these types of hearings. So you can see here, the first change is proposed in the section regarding the community meeting to add in the notice content that development applications subject to a special use permit, for those applications, the notice shall contain a reference to Section 2.3.8C, evidentiary hearing procedures. Excuse me. The next change is to the Order of Proceedings. The public hearing procedures are laid out in Chapter 2 of the ordinance. And in this, number three here, public participation is the new proposed language and striking public comment, and then separating out legislative public hearings versus how you can participate in an evidentiary hearing. So for legislative public hearings, public comments shall be heard. For evidentiary hearings, a party with standing or a non-party witness may present testimony in accordance with Section 2.3.8, which is opportunity to present testimony and evidence that also has some proposed changes. Then there's another clarification here in the Conduct of Public Hearing section about the rights of all persons, excluding evidentiary hearings, and then laying out the procedures for evidentiary hearings in the subsequent section, that evidentiary hearings are subject to the standards of the conduct of public hearing and the following, which is that a non-party witness with personal knowledge may be afforded a reasonable opportunity to present sworn factual, non-repetitive, and material testimony relevant to the application at the discretion of the person chairing the body conducting the evidentiary hearing. And so those are the changes that are proposed before you tonight. I'm sure you're concerned about making sure that this is clear, and be happy to answer any questions at this time, and I might have to rely on the county attorney as well.
Well, I think clarifying the difference between a legislative hearing and a special use permit or evidentiary hearing, a lot of times, the public doesn't understand the difference between giving public comments in a legislative item versus a special use permit where we're sitting here and can only consider evidence. So I think clarifying it is going to help the general public a little bit better to understand what their standing is when they come before us and what we can consider and can't consider. So I think this is good for the commissioners and the county to have it delineated a little more clearly. So I congratulate you on your work. And anybody have any comments or questions?
I'll just say, I'll just kind of piggyback on that. I think it's, and I think the handout that you developed, Megan, was, is very good and easy to understand, and I think it's important, especially in the language here about the non-party witness, to make sure that citizens have and understand how and when they can participate. Because I know in the last year or so, people felt like they could not, or were being told they can't participate, and I think it's important to let people understand that there is a way they can participate, and they can be heard, and I do thank you for your work, all of you on this.
And I think that's why the previous board, we got into that, that's why we were looking into that, that developing that flyer and education, educating the citizens, so this is good stuff.
Right. Anyone?
So staff and the planning board do recommend approval, so.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have one person signed up, Steve Hedrick. You wish to come forward and give your name and address and your comments, please.
Evening, Board. Steve Hedrick, 296 Summit Farms Trail. Did a lot of research into this, I have been for quite some time, and I really appreciate putting this all together so citizens have a great way to participate in our hearings. My questions actually come from the way the UDO was written, and I ran across this a day or two ago. We mentioned community meetings as a way to get out the evidentiary hearing process as we participate in the community meetings. Based on what I'm reading here, community meetings are only held if a subdivision is greater than 50 lots, even though a type 2 plat is required for subdivisions between 21 and 49. So if there's no community meeting, it says if in here, if they want to do one, or it would be nice if they did do one, if the developer of 48 homes decided not to do one, then the citizens would still be kind of left in the cold on how the procedure, the evidentiary procedures are done. So my suggestion would be to possibly look at the way it is written. The only place I referred back to the table, which I did not print off, but it, you know, does say a type 2 preliminary plat evidentiary hearing. But in that table, it does not say greater than 50 lots. But it does say so if you read on down. I'm looking at page 2.54 right now with subdivisions of 21 or more lots for a type 2 preliminary plat. So I'm just thinking the citizens who are having a 47-home subdivision put beside their properties may not be able to fully engage what we're trying, what you as a board are trying to accomplish here with community meetings and getting out how the evidentiary procedures work. Thank you.
And thank you for pointing that out. I'm going to ask staff to clarify that for, and you can send us an email, but clarify for us his concerns and.
Attorney's got something?
I think we both probably have something.
Yeah, you go ahead first.
So a community meeting is mandatory. If you look in the UDO section, 2.3.3C, community meeting is mandatory for any of the following: zoning map amendments, conditional rezonings, plan developments, special use permits, and type 2 preliminary plats. So everything that's subject to that, including special use permits, does require a community meeting.
What section did you pull that out of?
2.3.3C, one.
Literally the one right before.
And Jenny, did you have something to add to that?
I think, I think that's, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Do you see the section he's referring to?
Yes.
Would you want to elaborate on that at all?
Um, we probably need to discuss if we've been implementing that as it's written, because special use permits that are associated with subdivisions that are less than 50 lots, we have not been requiring a community meeting, and we might need to because the preliminary plat still has a special use permit if, for type 1 preliminary plats, we're within adequate public facilities within 85% of capacity, which we are and have been for a while, and then two, for those type 2 plats that are less than 50 lots, so.
So is that a clear?
I mean, that's how, that's the practice that had, has been done, so we might need to talk about whether or not that's how we do that moving forward.
Yeah, I think that would be a good subject for you two to discuss and kind of reach an agreement of what we're doing and how we're doing it, and then any recommendations to make sure that the public is adequately engaged in what's going on. That's my thoughts, I don't know.
No, I agree. I just, I thought we were doing it all along, but then this kind of gives another.
Now, we do, we do include in notices for this board, the special use, for special use permits, regardless of the preliminary plat, when those required adjacent property owner notices go out, which go out to the same folks that would get the community meeting notice, it has this process, and a link to the brochure on the website as well.
Okay. Any other questions? So our attorney and our planner will clarify this for the board, and then if we deem to take appropriate action to amend it, then we can direct staff to do that, correct?
That's correct.
So the confusion, okay.
All right, and Mr. Hedrick was all I had signed up. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Please. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, James Memes, 105 Chestnuts. So I just wanted to thank you for, you know, Ms. Jarvis, about mentioning that this is not to deter the public's participation in, as far as just public comment. I think what's important is to note that what's been going on that's kind of deterred some of the public is the line item under the public comment on the agenda. It states, please limit comments to matters other than those appearing on this agenda as a public hearing. And then you have members of the public that come up here and they wish to speak on it and they get paused, told to speak at evidentiary hearing for public comment, but then at evidentiary hearing, they're told, can't speak on it, you don't have standing. That's what I wish and hope that this board can stress to the public, that you can speak on anything that you would like at the three minutes, but that we also remove the other than those appearing on this agenda as a public hearing. Because if you're going to allow them to speak on anything that they want, that line item needs to be removed.
And I think the public comment, he's got a point. The public comment, you speak anything you want to. And then if you want to come up again and speak on the evidentiary, yes, you can speak twice if you want to. But you, he's correct. I mean, the public comment, you know, if you want to talk about what color the moon is tonight, it's fine, I don't care, but.
But I will mention to the board that if it is the subject of that evidentiary hearing, there's a constitutional issue there. So if somebody comes up to public comment initially at the meeting and they talk about something that is going to be before you as quasi judicial, and that's something that really is not something that you should hear, then that creates an, let me step back. So the due process issue is their attorney should have the opportunity to cross-examine that person. So if they come up during public comment to express their feelings about that, then they will not have that opportunity. So you really.
But I thought we, I thought we just couldn't, we couldn't accept it if it's just a public comment. And then a public hearing, the, I mean, that's when it would be.
The reason that you would hear that during the public hearing portion of that is so that the applicant can have the opportunity to cross-examine that person, and that's just rules of evidence in a constitutional issue.
But if it's brought up a second time, though, then they could cross-examine it. Is that correct?
What do you mean?
But they don't have to bring it up a second time.
They don't have to, but then we don't, we don't consider it because it's not evidence, it's not evidence.
We used to say, public comment is for any item you want to talk about other than something on the agenda for a public hearing.
Correct.
Right.
But I don't think it states that now under the.
But that, but what that does, that addresses what he's talking about.
It does say that, other than those appearing on this agenda as a public hearing.
Well, okay, I'm going to take that back.
But let me ask this question.
When I was, okay.
Can they, so let's suppose there's an agenda item that's going to be evidentiary on the 21st of January. We don't have, you know, we don't have the agenda for that far in advance in front of us. Could Mr. Memes come up tonight and give us his opinion at public comment about something that is upcoming? Would that be allowed?
Technically, if you know that that's up and coming and it's a quasi judicial proceeding, then technically it's, the same rules apply.
Well, then how would the public know if it's not on tonight's agenda and it says anything on it did it tonight?
They wouldn't.
And they come, so they could probably, they could say it.
But the issue.
Unless staff catches them.
Well, I know, but see.
Issue is, is if somebody comes up and speaks in public comment on something that's going to be evidentiary hearing, and then they speak again, they've spoken twice, and it's repetitive. And the other thing is, is if they're speaking about something that's on a public hearing tonight, we can't, we can't take that as part of comment because it's not part of the quasi, it's not part of the evidentiary hearing. So really, that's why it says you can comment on anything except something that's for a special use permit, and then you just sign up for the special use permit and you still get to speak.
Well, then we need to change this because this says on this agenda, and the point is, is that if we have something coming next week that's not on the agenda yet, somebody wants to come up and talk about it, it's not on this agenda so they can talk about. So we need to change this verbiage in here, though.
Also, doesn't that conflict, what was the, what was the Latin term for if we met as a board about a pub, yeah, ex parte?
Correct.
Right? Wouldn't, wouldn't that violate that as well?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Well, then I suggest that we change this. It says, this says this meeting, it should be, you should change it to any forthcoming evidentiary.
Yeah, I agree.
But we also, we don't question people at public comment usually.
No, we don't. We don't interact with them. It's for them to voice.
And that's my point. The applicant doesn't have an opportunity to question that person either. So that's a violation of their due process rights. It's a constitutional issue.
So then I suggest that we change this, and if something, if somebody in the public comes and goes to talk about something that we know is coming up, then we need to, then you need to speak up and put a stop to that.
Can they be vague? Like, I'll just, Greta, not Garrett, but Nelson, when, when she spoke, she's speaking in generalities, right? She's, she's saying we need bigger lot sizes, we need some commercial development. So she's speaking in generalities. Is that allowed, even though there may be something specific that they're thinking about?
Of course. I mean, we can't, we can't read her thoughts. And also, I mean, if it's general like that, if it's not specifically, if she doesn't say, oh, pertaining to this particular development or developer, absolutely, that's perfectly fine.
When it gets specific is when you can't, when it's pertaining to something that's coming to us in an evidentiary hearing, that's when you can't do it.
Right. Now, if it's legislative, I mean.
Doesn't matter legislative.
Yeah, you can hear whatever. You can consider whatever.
Well, then change this specifically states what we're talking about then. Because this says just for tonight's agenda only.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to move that we continue this and allow staff to develop language to address it.
I don't.
Address what?
I think the concern Commissioner Payment had was just with the agenda itself.
Just the verbiage on this thing. Because this is just talking about, you know, just for this, so you could talk about, you could talk about something coming next week tonight, and.
Yeah, I think the text amendment, I don't see that this is in conflict.
No, I was just talking about this.
The text amendment, I think the agenda is what the conflict is.
We do, we do have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Okay, there is not a second.
Who made the motion?
Oh, who made the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're, just to clarify, you're making a motion that we table this and give staff time to rework the wording on this.
Not on the text amendment.
The text amendment has nothing to do with what Mr. Memes brought up. What he brought up has to do with the wording on the agenda.
Correct.
They're two separate issues. The text amendment has nothing to do with, with that.
Correct, correct. But he's, he's talking, he's talking about going in and updating the requirements for the, the mandatory community meeting.
No, he's talking about the.
Wait, wait, who is he?
Owen's talking about, your motion speaks to.
Let's get the language right before we pass anything.
But what we're talking about has nothing to do with the language of the text amendment tonight.
Which language are you referring to, Commissioner Owen?
Wait, 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 wait. We need to stay germane to the text amendment.
Yes.
What's being proposed that was just at the, at the podium has nothing to do with the text amendment. It's a totally separate issue. If we want to discuss that, we can have that discussion later, but we need to stay on focus here and on point and, and decide what to do with this text amendment.
So the motion was made on the text amendment?
Oh, we have to.
No.
Motion.
Commissioner Etheridge made a motion to table this to address what Mr. Memes had brought up, which is a totally different issue than the text amendment.
Just withdrew it.
Yeah, he just withdrew it.
I thought he was making a motion on the text amendment.
No, he was not.
That's why I was confused, yes.
He was making a motion to continue it, to discuss the other stuff which isn't germane to the text amendment. So with that, the public hearing is closed, and I'll ask the board for their motion.
Okay, I'll do it. I move to, I move to approve PB 2404, Currituck County Text Amendment Shopping Centers. Oh, that's the wrong one, just kidding. I move to approve PB 2422, Currituck County Text Amendment evidentiary hearings because the request is in conformance with Unified Development Ordinance and clarifies evidentiary hearing procedures. The request is not in conflict with the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan.
All right, we have a motion.
Just real quick, just, I think some of us might have got turned. Did we not just discuss the attorney and staff getting together to clarify the verbiage on this?
Yeah, I think that that is, that is almost a separate thing. It's to look at.
Okay.
When can there be a separate text amendment?
You're okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Mike.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Now, to finish what Commissioner Etheridge was talking about, the staff is going to clarify on the agenda going forward, how it needs to read for public comment versus special use permits on the agenda, which is your issue that you had. And then the staff is also going to clarify the issue that Mr. Hedrick brought up about the community meetings, and they're going to let us know what their interpretation is. Then if we need to make a text amendment, we can direct staff to do that. Everybody on board?
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right. That's where I got, that's where I got turned around.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to new business. Resolution, sole source purchase from Carolina Recording Systems Archive Interface Server Integration. I was lucky to get that out, so I'm going to turn that to the county manager.
Or I can handle that.
Or the county attorney.
Okay. So North Carolina General Statute provides an exception to the competitive bidding requirements through North Carolina General Statute 143-129E6, which authorizes a unit of local government to purchase apparatus, supplies, materials, or equipment when standardization or compatibility is an overriding consideration. Proper functioning of the county's communications recording system requires the upgrade of the current system that we already have. Carolina Recording Systems is the only premier dealer of eventide products for the state of North Carolina, and the total cost for the upgrade to the system is $110,820. So therefore, it, with this exception, a resolution is required by this board as a sole source to not require the competitive bidding requirements to purchase that upgrade, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, now in layman's terms, what is this upgrade for?
That is a good question. Now I'm going to turn it over to the county manager.
So this is the recorder for the 911 Communications Center.
Okay.
It captures all of the, the audio and records it and archives it.
Okay, I understand now, in layman's terms. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, we need a motion from the board.
So moved.
Have a motion from Commissioner Payment.
Second.
Second, from Commissioner Rose. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 2 of new business is resolution opposing Part 3, Section Law 2024-57, Senate Bill 382 regarding zoning authority of local governments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Senate Bill 382 is entitled Disaster Relief III Budget Various Law Changes. It was initially drafted as Dental Practice Act changes, and then modified for the stated purpose of prioritizing aid for Hurricane Helene recovery efforts. And amongst that, at the very tail end of that bill is this part regarding downzoning. And that you'll find in 160D-601 of the North Carolina General Statutes. Downzoning refers to any zoning provision that reduces development density to any degree, removes any permitted uses of land from any zoning district, or creates non-conformities and non-residential zoning districts. And this new bill that was adopted now requires the, requires written consent by all property owners that, whose property is going to be subject to this downzoning. So prior to this enactment, there was an exception that local governments could implement downzoning without the written consent of property owners. And now there's that added requirement, and it, it pretty much, it limits local governments from, from downzoning. And these are the most basic tools that local governments have available to maintain land use compatibility, achieve desired density, and ensure orderly growth and development. This Senate Bill 382 applies to any ordinance that's enacted presently and into the future, as well as anything that was enacted six months prior to. And so this resolution is strongly opposing that Senate Bill 382 and directing the clerk to the board to forward a certified copy to Senator Bobby Hannig.
And we even locked the firm one of the copies to correct.
They did, yes.
Any questions? I do, I do want to throw out one scenario that we need to think about, though. Let's say that somebody gets a piece of property upzoned from residential to commercial, and they're going through their process and they're going to do it commercial, whatever. And then a board of commissioners could just go and change it back to residential or whatever after they spent a huge amount of money on it. There are circumstances where it, it is not proper to downzone somebody's property once they've expended money. So once they've expended money with a rezoning, do they get a vesting at some point? And the reason I say that is, let's say Commissioner Etheridge is the one that's doing it. Okay, a new board comes in here and we hate Commissioner Etheridge. We could put the, the whammy to Commissioner Etheridge just because we didn't like him, not because it was the right thing to do. So my question is, at one, at what point in a rezoning, I know it used to be that with a preliminary plat or sketch plan, once you spend a certain amount of money, there was a vesting.
Yes. So you have common law vesting.
Yes.
And I think that would apply here in this scenario. You could make that argument. So if an applicant has relied on a final decision of a local government, which the, the upzoning would be that, that final determination, and they made substantial expenditures in reliance on that local government approval, I think they would have an argument for a vested right in that project.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that at some point, people do get vested rights because that's one of the foundations of this country.
That's right.
Is property right, so.
I know some of the classes I've gone to, they told us, you don't downzone property because that's, only if the owner asks for it, you stay away from it. Because it just don't open up a lawsuit.
Yeah. I don't know of any time in my service on the board we've ever downzoned anything, but, and it probably is never going to happen, but I understand the reason why the counties would also want to have that authority in a different situation. So I'm okay with it, but I just want to make sure where eyes are wide open about vesting and, and property rights once they have a zoning.
I think that's an excellent point.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion, did we, who did the motion?
I'll make a motion.
Nobody. We have.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, do we have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item 3, Letter of Concern to OSHA Regarding New Revised Rule on Emergency Response. I was, in my work, I get OSHA bulletins, and I received one where OSHA is looking at a rule change that would impose OSHA requirements on possibly volunteer fire departments if they were to hire personnel, I believe, manager. That would be devastating to volunteer fire departments throughout the state, throughout the nation, if they suddenly had to start meeting all the OSHA requirements. So I asked the manager to put together a letter we can send to our, this is a federal rule, so it needs to be sent to our federal representatives, but she can give you a little summary of what I just mangled.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so this is a draft comment for OSHA. Sure, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so this is a draft comment for OSHA's emergency response standard. This is a modernization essentially of regulations that protect emergency responders. So the intent of the rule is, is positive. It's good. But there are concerns across the country about the cost of compliance with the rule. It impacts career and volunteer firefighters and emergency medical responders. So here in the county, it could impact our career fire service, our career emergency medical services, as well as our volunteer firefighters. So OSHA has a, an open docket right now, which will submit the, the comment through the docket, and we've highlighted some concerns, some specific concerns. I'll just read through the, the conclusion, because it is a lengthy letter. So some of the revisions that have been requested, and these are shared with the state associations, the State Fire Marshal's Office, for example, and the EMS Association. But requested revisions include limiting the scope of the rule through a minimum paid responder threshold, or a revenue threshold, similar to the enterprise coverage mechanism and the FLSA, removing the incorporation of NFPA standards by reference, and instead placing all requirements in the language of the rule itself. Also requiring or developing methods to test equipment and vehicles for usability, rather than imposing mandatory replacement after reaching a certain age limit, which would have pretty drastic implications here. And then modifying timelines for compliance with the rule to account for a wide variety of hazards within different service areas and budgets. So we will, with your approval tonight, upload this into the docket and share with our federal representatives.
Yeah, and I think one of the big things is the age of a fire truck, not the viability of the fire truck. It's the age of it would determine when it had to be replaced. It could still be a good fire truck, and you had to spend a million dollars to replace it. It makes no sense at all, and it, anyways, we just need to pass this and send it forward. Any questions?
Move for approval.
So a motion, a second. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is a resolution of appreciation to U.S. Congressman Dr. Greg Murphy. Commissioner Etheridge asked that to be put on the agenda with the redistricting effective January 1st. Senator, or Representative Murphy is no longer our congressman, but he has served us well over the last several years, so this is a resolution saying, "Thank you." You wanna add anything to that, Commissioner Etheridge?
Move for approval.
Have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We should reach out to Congressman Davis and invite him to come to Currituck.
Absolutely. We can ask the county manager to invite Congressman Davis to Currituck. He is our representative now. All right, item five, Planning Board Appointment. That's for Mr. Angel. Do you want to reappoint?
Uh, yeah, make a.
Well, we could do them all at once. I just wanna.
Yep.
And, and then Commissioner Jarvis has Gary Owens, and Commissioner Jarvis also has Stephen Craddock for the Board of Adjustment. So we'd do those all in one motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the board appointments.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, Consent Agenda.
Move for approval.
Have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I would just like to ask that the balloon ban on intentional balloon, mass balloon releases be put on the agenda for January 21st.
Yes, ma'am.
And hopefully, we'll, for the first time in a while, have a full board.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. And now we'll move to Commissioner's Report. Commissioner Etheridge?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you. As some people might know, some might not, the former clerk to this board, Quinn King, passed away on Christmas Day.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yes.
Chairman O'Neil and myself, I think we worked with her 16 years or something like that. And that's a stunner to have somebody your own age pass away. Mr. Hedrick, on two different occasions, has rolled up the idea of making our 911 dispatchers, designating them as first responders, and I am gonna submit a resolution to do that. Forty-six counties in North Carolina have designated their 911 people as first responders, and what it does is it gives an air of more professional development and loyalty. So that'll be coming forward, and I want to thank Steve Ford.
Yeah, and I'd like to ask for the county attorney to delineate the difference for us, for us novices, so that I understand what the resolution is going to entail.
I'm actually not sure. This is the first time hearing of it.
So you've got.
To be honest.
Two weeks to work on it.
Yeah.
I think you can get a copy from another county and see what they.
Yeah. I'm not able to locate it right now, but I do have some information regarding that, so I can, I can share that with you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Angel?
I got nothing.
Commissioner Rose?
Well, I had my first meeting with the Social Services Board, and I just wanna commend that group, not the board, but social services in general, for all that they do for Air County. Many, many people benefit from them. That would be it.
All right, Commissioner Payment?
Nothing this evening.
Commissioner Jarvis?
I just wanna wish everyone a happy 2025. That's all I have.
All right, I want to, also, our former planning director, Gary Ferguson, who worked here for several years, was also involved in an accident and passed away before Christmas. So we've lost two of our former employees that used to work here. Also, just want to acknowledge the, the death of President Carter. I did not vote for him. I did not think he was a good president, but he was a darn good man.
Yeah.
And, and his rewards in heaven should be, be large. He, he had a huge impact after his service to the country as president, and I just think we need to acknowledge, anybody that rises to the seat of presidency in this country deserves a certain amount of respect and, and treated with dignity, and so I wanted to bring that forward. Also, Commissioner Rose and myself have been discussing the commercial fishermen in Currituck County, and what.
And the farmers.
Yeah. And, and what marine fisheries, they make rules, and they're harming our local commercial fishermen, whether it's in Currituck, Dare County, and they have no voice. They do not have any voice. The meetings are held far away where they can't attend. So what I would like to do is, at some point in the near future, have a work session with some of these commercial fishermen, so that we can at least advocate on a local level to the state some of their issues. I mean, there's, there's flounder out there, but we can't fish them. There's foreign trawlers all off the coast of North Carolina, and our local folks here can't make a living fishing. Now, I understand there's some science to it, and I'm, and I'm not a science denier, but I also know the science isn't always right on the rules that they make, and you served on that board at one time.
I did.
So you know more about it than anybody.
And Paul served as chairman.
That's right.
So it is, there, there's a lot of ridiculous rules in place. One that I know firsthand is they require you to leave your pound net poles to mark your place, but you don't have to set the net anymore, as long as there's a quota. They're not letting you catch the fish, so they don't make you go to the expense of setting the net. But if you don't have all of that properly marked and in place, you get a ticket. So they're making you put gear in the water.
That you're not using.
And, and impacting boaters and others, and, yeah, it's silly stuff like that.
So we would like that some point, Commissioner Rose and myself will get together about a good time to do this, when they're not so busy maybe, and, and schedule a work session to give them a chance to at least feel like somebody is on their side.
And we're probably coming up on, or we're in the midst of one of their least busy times of year.
Yeah, so we'd like to schedule that. So, and that is all I have for Commissioner's Report. We'll go to County Manager's Report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take a moment to, to thank all of our team who worked over the holidays. We, outside of our regular public safety, you know, folks working on holidays, we had some other, other incidents. We had a water main break, and Moak, and some other things going on, so I just wanted to, to thank all of our, our team for that, and for answering the call to public service. Also, wanted to note that I shared a memo with you today on the Currituck County access permit, just for your review, and I think if you would like to discuss your vision for beach parking or for solid waste in the county moving forward, we can do that at the retreat or at another time. And then also wanted to remind everyone that administrative offices will be closed in observance of the Martin Luther King Holiday on Monday, January 20th, and that your regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 21st.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Attorney, do you have anything tonight?
No report.
Report. Anything else from the commissioners? Then, am I allowed to adjourn the meeting without a motion?
No.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed can stay.